Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, meeting of the City Beacon Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Haug. I am the Chair of this board. We are joined here today by my fellow board members, minus one, our attorney, our secretary, and the building inspector. Thank you all for coming out. Just a brief introduction. It should be noted that in order to be granted a variance from this board, you must always have three votes regardless of the number of members that are here. So if we are a five-member board, which we're not tonight, you need three members to vote yes. Four, as we are tonight, you need three to vote yes. And a three-member board, which is a quorum, you would need unanimous vote. Just important to note that as we've had some down meetings by members. So you can of course always ask for an adjournment. I know there is at least one today that's on, that has asked for an adjournment in previous meetings, I think in part due to that reason. It's just important to consider before asking us to proceed to a vote. With that being said, has anyone, has everyone on the board been able to review the minutes of the May meeting? And are there any comments, concerns, or corrections that need to be made? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the May meeting.
A motion by Elaine. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe. All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained since I was not there. Can I have a motion to continue the public hearing on agenda item number one?
So moved.
Motion by Judy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you again for your time. I do appreciate it. Jody McCready, 11 Highland Place. So I brought some things with me tonight. So I am here about a driveway. So I've lived in my house for about 20 years. About a year and a half ago, the planning board approved a subdivision across the street from me. My entire neighborhood came out to oppose this happening mainly because there's no outlet for the subdivision because of the way that the lot is constructed. So there are now four houses that come out of a shared driveway directly opposite my house, and my street is only 20 feet wide. And one of the main things that we said in front of the planning board was that this would make my street, Highland Place, very difficult, very dangerous to drive down when there are cars parked on both sides of the road, trucks can't pass through, Amazon vans have had a hard time if an ambulance or a fire engine or something had to go to one of the back houses to make that turn. They're not going to be able to do it with cars parked on both sides of the street. We saw all of these issues happening. We brought it to the planning board. We brought it to the traffic and safety committee. Nobody else seemed to think that it was a problem. It passed. So now we have all of these houses across the street. There have been two car accidents already right in front of my house on Highland Place. One of them was my own car that got smashed into by a car backing out of the driveway across the street. My car was directly in front of my house, and the truck came out from across the street and went like that to go in and went right into the back of my car. We no longer feel safe parking on our street. So I would like to build a circular driveway in front of our house to get that traffic off the street. We want to avoid Highland Place becoming like Van Nuydeck or even Washington Avenue. I drive down every single day, and I have to cross over the double yellow line because there are cars parked, and there's just not enough room to pass. My street is obviously much narrower than that, and it's becoming extremely dangerous. I've spoken to all of my neighbors about this. I've spoken to, at the last meeting when I spoke about this, three of my neighbors came and spoke up that all said that this is a great idea, that this should definitely be something that happens. Just in the past couple of months, people walking their dogs would, you know, ask me about the public notice sign in front of my house, and I would tell them what I'm doing, and they would all say, oh, this is great. That would be so much better for the street. And I actually have for you guys, one of the things I have for you is this is a petition that has been signed by every single person living on Highland Place, except for the people in the new house in the back, because I haven't met them yet, and I felt weird walking through a construction zone to talk to them. But every single other person living on Highland Place has signed this to say, yes, this will make our neighborhood safer. We do want this to happen. This would make it much easier to drive down the street. I also have, and I'll bring this over to you guys, some pictures. As I walk around my neighborhood and I drive around my neighborhood, there are many homes in my neighborhood that have similar things or more parking. This one in particular, which I'll come around and bring, it, there's, it's a narrow house. There's a driveway on both sides of the house, and then a paved spot in front of the house. So there's literally, like, there's hardly any front yard. There's like two little bushes in the front yard. Everything else is paved driveway. So I just want to show you guys what the neighborhood kind of looks like. Because this really isn't different than what we actually already have. This will be nicer. We want to build the driveway around the tree. It will be, it will be pretty. We're going to make it look good. It's going to be a positive thing for everybody. We, we've honestly been parking our cars there now anyway, just to avoid the mess that's going on in the street. It will make it much easier and nicer to actually have a real driveway to be able to park in, and that's why I'm here. I went back to look at some of your previous meetings to see about driveways. I only found one, which was not surprising because pretty much everybody that I spoke to said, why are you in front of the zoning board? You should have just built your driveway like everybody else in Beacon does. But I don't do things like that, so I went to the building department, and I'm doing it the right way, and I'm here. But the one, the one application for variance that I did find for somebody who wanted to build a driveway in front of their house, it was approved unanimously. I found many other applications for front yard setbacks, for offices and structures and actual, you know, buildings that were put there that have all passed. This is just a driveway. It's not, it's not intrusive. It's, you know, it's going to make the neighborhood prettier and safer. And I was looking at your criteria for granting variance, so I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting this area request? Absolutely not, as seen in the pictures. This is perfectly in line with the character of the neighborhood. It will be a help to the nearby properties. And as you can see, there was, yeah, yeah, exactly. And as you can see, everybody in my neighborhood has agreed that they want this to happen. Can the benefit the applicant seeks be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require an area variance? It is, it cannot. My property is on too steep of a hill to extend the existing driveway. There's just no other place to park the cars. Is the requested variance substantial? It's not. I'm not proposing a building or an extension or an apartment, or, it's just a circular driveway that will still have grass and a tree in front of it. Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? It will actually have a positive effect, which is why all of my neighbors want me to do this. And is the alleged difficulty self-created? Absolutely not. I did everything in my power to avoid this. I don't want to be doing this. I don't want to be here tonight. My nephew is visiting. My entire family is out to dinner right now, and I am here at a zoning board meeting. I do not want to be doing this. I do not want to be spending this money. I don't have a choice at this point. This is what I have to do. So that's my story.
It's a good one. Can I ask, what is the, in a nutshell, what is the, I know there's not supposed to be driveways in front of the living space, right? Is that the?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the way the code reads for driveways is that it's, can't be in the front yard. So in the required front yard, actually. So technically, so if you have to have a, let's say, a 20-foot setback in your front yard, then you would have to, you wouldn't be able to use that first 20 feet as long as you had parking beyond that, then that would be okay. But this one here, it's, it is just not enough room. Most of the front yard is technically the required front yard.
And it's part of a bunch of different parts of the regulations to say that the city doesn't want people to have anything in the front. So you can't have, for example, a shed in front of the house. So there's a sort of fundamental, basic, underlying principle, which is the city in general doesn't want people to put anything in front of the house.
Yes, that's, yeah, that is part of the code as well. So, yeah, for accessory structure, or, give even temporary things, too, they shouldn't be put out there.
Like a dumpster, for example. You shouldn't put a dumpster in front of your house.
Yeah, a dumpster if you're doing actual work and it's there for a short period of time.
Right.
But it's supposed to keep the neighborhoods, you know, full. But in this case, you know, the parking, it's a difficult one because there is, there is a lot of it, and it's just hard to pin down the dates of when they were done. And that's why it's, you come in to build something new today, unfortunately, this is what the common sense.
When I used to understand it, what I thought I understood it to mean, the last time we had one, and I think it was off of Van Nuydeck, what does Henry turn into?
Van Nuydeck.
Yeah, so it's, there was one over there. And the thing was, was they were taking their garage, turning it into a family room, and then putting their garage, their driveway facing right in. I don't really recall. It was a couple of years ago. I don't really remember when we gave them the, do you remember?
There was one more recent than that, I think, over...
Did we give them the variance?
Yeah, but they gave up.
They gave to give.
Right? So that one, the most...
I don't remember the gain to give.
The most recent one, I think it was up, I think it was over off of Jordan Road, I think. And I think, well, I know, if that's the one that I'm recalling, we, they had a driveway, and they wanted to move it, and we made them give up the driveway they were using in order to, you remember this, George, correct?
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
But I always thought that it was almost more of like, well, first of all, it's a little bit, you don't want people putting their parking right in front of their house because it is, it's unsightly in most cases. But I also thought there was kind of a danger that you're, you know, you're pointing your car right at your family room, you know, which doesn't seem to be, be that safe either. I guess you could put pylons there or something.
Yeah, so this, this would be a circular?
No, I understand. I understand. I happen to have a circular driveway in my front yard, so, in Beacon, so...
I think it would look nice, I mean, obviously, a paved driveway right in front of your house, the aesthetics aren't there anyway, this, you know, this would be much prettier.
Yeah, but circular driveways are a, are a, are a good thing.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree.
You know.
I wish that there were more of that.
Like in real estate, that's a big thing you put in there, you know? Wow, circular driveway, everybody loves this.
Except it's ruled out by the zoning.
Right, but that's...
The other parking, the parking spaces you currently, hold it, I'll get it, currently have?
Yes.
They're not really paved?
Right.
Okay. Are you, you're going to pave those also along with the circular?
We weren't intending to.
You were just going to put the circular in?
Yeah. I'm not even sure if we're going to pave the circular right away because it's a lot of money, and I laid out a lot of money for the variance, so we might just do a gravel driveway. What, what I really want to do is, I would love to do pavers and make it look really nice. We just, we don't have the money for that yet, so we would probably just, just do gravel, just to have a place to, to park where the cars are safe.
I know we touched on this last time, but I want to bring it up again because I think it's an alternative that presents itself, which is you have an existing place that you're parking cars now, and as I recall, there was one car that was parked there a lot of the time. But there was enough room in principle if you were to push back the driveway and build a retaining wall to have a more conventional, inside-the-zoning rules, alternative, which would be to pave or gravel the area there and build a retaining wall so there was enough for your three cars or whatever number of cars it was you're talking about.
So I have spoken to a few people about that. There are a few issues with it. The main one for me being the expense of doing all of that. Like I said, I can't afford to put pavers on the circular driveway that I'm asking for, so to grade that and build a retaining wall and to do, it's just, it's way too large of a project that, for what we can do. There's also, because of the steep slope that the house is on, our basement is actually above ground and has its own entrance, and there are windows on that side. If we were to do that, it would block all of the windows. We wouldn't get any sunlight into that part of the house. It would, it would really just kind of destroy the quality of living inside the house, and it would take the usable part of our yard away. So that...
Except as I recall, that's a banked area that's relatively steep there, so it's not necessarily that usable. Aside from this question of maybe casting shadow on the windows.
Oh, we use it. We set up a water slide that goes down the hill in the summer sometimes, which is, my kids have really enjoyed that, like one of the little inflatable water slides. We put them on the hill so that...
If it's steep, it's not actually going back that far because the steepness...
Cuts it off.
Right. If it was a more gentle slope, it would go back further into the backyard.
And then the other issue with that is when you have two layers of cars directly opposite the driveway from the other project, where all of those houses are going to be coming and going from that driveway, that creates more danger because we've already seen that a lot of the cars coming out of that driveway, especially the larger ones, kind of pull into our driveway in order to turn around. And it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be as safe as coming into a circular driveway and then being able to, to go right back out and to see what we're doing. And then, you know, the shuffling of cars when somebody comes home late, but somebody else has to leave in the morning. It just, it doesn't have the same quality of life benefit that this would have.
How many current parking spaces would you say you have in your, in your driveway now?
Currently, I have three.
And how many do you need?
I need four.
And, sorry to jump in, how many, and I don't know, Ms. McCready, if you can answer this, or Bruce, or both, the proposed circular driveway would fit approximately, how many cars do you think?
Two.
Two?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, that sounds about right?
Yeah.
Yeah? So two in the proposed circular, three in the existing thing off to the side there.
Yeah, so there are, there are four cars that currently live in my house. So if we were to have the circular driveway and then the other driveway, that would be beneficial. Like I said, my nephew's here now. He has his car. Our, our plan is just to keep cars off the road. And, you know, driving around the city, if, if more people who lived on like Van Nuydeck and Washington Avenue wanted to do things like this, I think, I personally believe that this is a benefit to the city because just in general, in many areas of the city, it's becoming very difficult to, to just navigate, yeah, to, to drive. I know people that have gotten hit by cars. A friend of mine got, got hit riding her bike. She got hit on a car and messed up her class car. You know, my, my daughter's a new driver, and she's having a, it's just, it's, the city has become very dangerous with everything going on. So I think that things like this help make it a little bit safer.
So I think the last time we were talking about, you know, giving to get, as I said before, if we were inclined to grant the variance but prohibit the use of a portion of your current driveway, is that a trade that you'd be willing to make?
I would be willing to make it if I had to because I think that the circular driveway is important. I would prefer not to, especially since so many other homes in my area do have more paved parking around them than mine does. I don't really see why I would need to do that. It would be an additional expense to pull up the gravel and try to make grass grow there and to, to fix all of that, so, I mean, it's already kind of overgrown because we haven't really been taking care of it because it hasn't really been a priority.
Sure, yeah, I just think, you know, so the way I read the code, right, the intent is for, the way, aesthetics, I guess, beautification. And so, you know, as a board, at least from my perspective, we have to weigh your desire to do this for practicality versus what the city's intent was in passing the law, which, again, is the way things look. And so we're supposed to grant the minimum variance necessary. And so I'm just trying to weigh that in my head. As far as, something else I wanted to address, though, the traffic safety committee, have you, you had talked to them about making your road parking on one side or no?
The planning board had sent everything to them when, when everything was getting approved for what was going on across the street, and I had sent them pictures of cars parked on both sides of my street and told them how unsafe it was, and the planning board came back and said that the traffic and safety committee didn't see a problem with it.
All right. Which side of the street, if there, in your opinion, if there was a designation for parking on one side of the street or the other, which do you think would be more logical?
At this point, unfortunately, I think that if that were to happen, it would be my side of the street because, again, there's that long shared driveway on the other side of the street that trucks need to turn in on, and they come right up to my property line to make that turn.
Well, it's done, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just ridiculous parking in front of my house right now.
No, which, which way did you say, which side did you say should have no parking?
I said if the traffic is, yeah, it would be my side if the traffic and safety committee...
Right, right, so the turn can be, so the turn can be made, yeah.
So, George, just as a, as a note, what I would like to do, I don't even know if I need a motion, if I do, I'll ask for one, is to send a letter from the zoning board to the traffic safety committee making their recommendation that they should consider making the street one-side parking.
On behalf of the zoning board?
On behalf of the zoning board, yeah. Make, you know, just saying we had an application in front of us. We, we've observed the street in, you know, whether or not I can do that as Chair or whether or not, you know...
Yeah, I would just, I'd make the motion and then just do it that way after the application's done. Separate and apart, of course, from however this application goes, right?
Yep. That's not going to solve the applicant's problem.
No, I agree.
Yeah, that's a separate, yeah, that's a separate discussion, I think.
Sure.
And in the winter, it would make it that much harder to get cars off the street.
Well, true, but a big part of the applicant's application is how dangerous it is, and so...
Right, and, and it's worth noting that we, as the zoning board, don't have control of the traffic safety considerations on the street.
Right, absolutely.
I'm just making that point.
Sure, yeah. Yes. Any other questions for the applicant?
Aside from sending the photos to the traffic safety board, have you gone and talked to them?
I have not.
Okay.
I know that a member of the planning board sits on the traffic and safety committee and heard all of the discussions that we've had at the planning board meetings.
Right.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application?
I had some neighbors come last time, but, and they were not people that signed the petition.
Sure.
And that's, that's all in the record, so don't worry. Like, we have all their names and everything, so...
All right. Anything else you'd like to add before we close the public hearing?
I don't think so.
All right.
Could we specify that they, at some future point, they're talking about doing something different in terms of the paving aside from gravel. Could we clarify, you could put the circ, circular in and pave it or put pavers down. The other three spots would stay as-is and not be paved over at any point?
I mean, if that's a condition, conditions, remember, have to be reasonably related to a concern that comes from the variance. If it were to be granted, I guess I would ask for a discussion for why never paving those three spots alleviates any concerns with that, but it's theoretically a feasible condition. I know, Jordan, you mentioned a condition before theoretically, and that, that might address that a little bit if the board decides to go that way.
Can we ask the applicant if, ahead of time, should they accept that?
Yeah, any conditions, any conditions, yeah, I encourage you to ask the applicant and the applicant to...
Would you accept that?
I mean, I don't really...
You said you can't pave the other places?
I don't really understand why because, again, you have the pictures where so many other...
But that's what we don't want.
Well, I mean, but it's not going to be that. Like, what, the pictures that I've shown you are like, things that, like, yeah, and that's what my entire neighborhood looks like. So if I'm going to put pavers down and I want, you know, the spots on the side to match the spots in the front, like, that's going to be gorgeous. That's going to be a lot nicer.
I'm just saying, in case you decided not to put pavers and you decided to put asphalt, it would simply look like less of a stretch of asphalt in front of the house.
So one of the, so the spot on the end where the car basically lives and, and doesn't move, that is already asphalt and has been for, I don't know, 60 years.
Okay.
The other two spots are gravel. What I would be okay with would be maybe paving the two spots on the end, like we had discussed, and then the circular, and leaving the, the middle area, getting rid of that other spot, and leaving that as green space.
She's talking, you're talking about the...
Where the yellow car is.
To make that green space?
No, that's already paved.
Yeah.
So I'm saying to leave that and maybe the spot next to it...
Yep, and so then there'd be a gap, and then the...
Right, and then there would be a gap and then have the circular.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be possible as a sort of lesser concession, I mean, lesser variance, to just make your current driveway wider and have it potentially, if necessary, block a little bit of your house as opposed to building a circular driveway that goes across the entirety of your house?
So there are two problems with that. The first one is, I think it's ugly. I just, I do. It's, it's just a long four-car. I just, I think that would be really ugly. I'm trying to make this aesthetically nice. I think the circular driveway looks better. I think having the, the grass in front of it and the tree there would look better. I think having the, the space where you can see through to the backyard and go is, it just makes it better for...
Potentially, it's more aesthetic if there are no cars in it, but when you actually put the cars in the driveway and then some on the side, it's not necessarily wonderful aesthetics. The thing that makes it ugly isn't the driveway, but the cars that park in.
Well, when the cars are in a circular driveway, then they have the grass and the tree in front of them. When there's no circular driveway, they're directly on the street with no grass and tree in front of them, so it actually looks, looks better to have cars in a circular driveway in front of the street.
The natural thing in, in our zoning code is to have your parking on the side of the lot, not in front of the house.
Maybe, except for circular driveways.
Except it's specifically excluded by the zoning for a reason.
So I'm, I'm a little confused about that because the...
Circular driveways are not, not a problem?
You can't put one in front of the...
Technically, they're not allowed to park at all in the front, so if you have the existing driveways, that's pre-existing, I've gone back on the maps, they've been there for quite a few, for quite a long time. So technically, where those other two spots, that's actually not informing because, again, those were there, I'm not sure what they, they, they had added this to the code, but you're not allowed to park it in the front yard. I mean, that's, that's the front, you know, from the front plane of the house going forward to the street.
Right. How do we define front yard?
What was it?
How do you define front yard?
The front yard is the, is the area, you know, to the front of the house.
From the street.
From the front plane of the house going forward towards the street for the entire width of the property.
Inte, so her entire property is the front yard?
The, yeah.
So if this house was built today, there would be no driveway allowed?
If it was built today, they would have to get, they'd have to have a garage to get the two required parking spaces, or they would have to come up along the side of the house and then also maintain a five-foot setback from the property line.
Okay.
From the street?
No, from the property line.
Oh, from the next door.
Yes.
For the property line.
And I'll just say, too, I'm a little confused, and I know that we have a difference of interpretation on this law, but the, the part of the law that says that I can't do this is preceded by a line that says, "Structures and land uses in existence before April 20th, 1964, or structures and uses for which building permits had been approved on or before said date shall not be subject to the requirements set forth in this section," which I think is why so many houses in my neighborhood have that. So my house was built in 1948. I was confused as to why I needed the variance in the first place. I don't know if the attorney can shed light on that, but I was under the belief when I first applied for this that, that that wouldn't even apply to our house because it was built before that regulation.[1754.83] regulation.
Um, the, the reason you would need the variance, it, I, I don't wanna sort of point fingers, but, it's not pointing fingers, it, that's Bruce's domain, so I can try to shed light on why something is worded a certain way, but in every municipality, the building inspector makes that determination, so the only reason is because you went to Bruce for the permit or whatever it was, and Bruce said, okay, well, under this code section, that was applicable, um, if you disagreed with the language or if you disagreed with that determination, that would be, unfortunately for you, a separate proceeding beha, before the ZBA saying, okay, I disagree with Bruce, um, and if, I, I'd like to overturn that decision, and by the way, if it's not overturned, I'd wanna get the variance anyway, so...
Okay, I wasn't aware of that previously, thank you.
I don't...
What do you think, do you think, um...
I mean, I know what I think. I think we should, well, I think we should close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion by Judy, and it's second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So, we have, we, we have a few different, uh, I think, ideas of, uh, concession, and so I think we need to work out what one, if any, the board can get a consensus on, uh, and then work through the application as we normally do, so I think we have, uh, my idea of basically giving up the space nearest to the house, so it would go from three spots to four. Um, then we have Stowe's, which was...
Why are we gonna have four, because there'll be three in the circular?
Two in the circular, one in, and two in the existing.
One, two, three and four in the circular.
So this and this is, that's the only page, right?
One, two, three is considered...
I was here like three weeks ago, I can't remember it at all.
The other two are gravel, the grass is grown through.
So it's three spots currently, one, two, three.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, so we're gonna say, you gotta give up that third one.
That's my proposal.
I like that proposal.
Stowe, what was yours?
Yeah, I could live with that proposal, but, you know, the proposal I made, which is slightly different, was, you know, building a retaining wall and making the existing space for, that exists already, that they're already using, just having it go back farther with a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that avoids the problem of having anything in the front of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not a...
It's a trade-off, though, because you still have...
It's not a great solution for the...
And it has to be, one of the factors is feasibility, so I, I don't know construction estimates, for example, but if it's triple the price, for example, to bring in fill and put a retaining wall, I'm not saying it is, then it becomes, is that feasible, right? So that's just one of the...
Certainly not easier, clearly.
Yeah. Any, uh...
I think getting up the spot closest to the house and doing the circular would be, make the most sense.
Uh...
I'd even be okay with the two spots going.
Well, sure. Okay, so let's, let's go through the, the application, or the, uh, yeah, the factors. With the, the thought in mind that we're gonna make that a condition, uh, so as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
No, I don't think it'd have any effect.
I was...
You were?
Yeah.
Oh, I concur.
I guess with the trade-off we're talking about, it's material, really.
So there would be no undesirable change?
Yeah.
No undesirable change.
Anyone want to elaborate just a little for the...
I actually think it's gonna be a desirable change.
Okay, there you go.
As opposed to an undesirable change.
I think the, the desirable change of congestion on the street, uh, preventing that outweighs the undesirable change of the intent of the code to protect the front of houses. Uh, as to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance.
There is a way, that void suggests it, but it's, um, it's, it's financially not feasible.
And, and may in fact entail other problems, so, that we, we haven't researched or whatever.
It's a much more complex thing to do than what she wants to do.
Yeah, and on the side, the property next to them, where the, next to where the yellow car parked, they might need another variance to get the new driveway, the required distance from the property line.
Sure.
Yep.
As to whether the variance, the requested variance is substantial?
I really don't see it as particularly substantial, I don't think it's...
I agree with you, I don't either.
I don't see it as making a big difference in the neighborhood, I don't think it's going to make a big difference in the lot, so I don't see it as a substantial.
Well, I think it's substantial just in the, the sense that the fundamental rule in the zoning code is being put aside, but that doesn't mean I don't think it's the best solution.
I honestly don't think they're taking circular driveways into account, because they are like an upgrade, they're like something that's very wanted, it's not the driveway headed into the family room that I think, or like, you know, taking up paving your whole floor, it's not the same as what I think the vet, the, the zoning code is trying to achieve.
And if every variance from the zoning co, code is substantial because it's a variance from the zoning code, then everything we do is substantial.
Wow.
I was, so, Stowe's point.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's more substantial than saying you wanna build something three inches closer to the lot line, you know, which is the kind of variances we see quite a lot, so nonetheless, I think...
No, you have a point.
The board has not agreed on if it's substantial or not.
You do say.
I, I didn't say anything, but I, I think, I think, uh, it's not a mathematical, right? It, it just is, a, it is a variance, um, it's not a percentage, therefore, I, I agree with Stowe, it's substantial, I think that, that, I think that that factor, uh, is, is not determinative. Uh, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
No, it'll help with the parking.
Yeah, I think it'll be a, a positive.
Yeah.
Uh, as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
No.
It may be one of the few that he's...
One of the few that isn't.
What do you say?
Well, maybe, the question of having four cars.
Well, maybe if you had less cars, the fact that you have, but, it, it, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's self-created.
They're, they're almost, they're almost, they're almost all self-created.
Waffling on that.
Always self-created. I thought this would be one case where it wasn't.
I know.
I, I think, uh...
No, the fire, the fire on Walcott Avenue.
It's, it's self-created, yeah.
Is that self-created? No.
Uh, and then, the last, uh, is, uh, that this is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character and neighborhood, uh, sorry, character of the neighborhood and health, safety and welfare of the community.
Yes.
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 I think with the condition it is, um, and so then, uh, the conditions would be, um, that all fees to the city are paid, uh, in full, um, and then Bruce, uh, is there a building permit needed to construct, uh, a driveway?
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Okay, and so then, um, six months, the building permit must be applied to and then, uh, it completed within 24 months, do you think you'll be able to adhere to those? And then the, uh, final condition, uh, would be to, uh, give up the space that you currently have closest to the house and just demarcate that in some manner, uh, and then...
The edging of the lawn versus the gravel in the driveway or something like that.
Yeah, you could do, you know, um, obviously, if, if you were to pave the driveway or whatever, if you, or put gravel, you would do it two spots wide, or if you put, um, you know, Belgian block or something, some way to demarcate, um, the intention of Ms. McCready is just obviously to have some way of showing that these are the two spots, yeah.
Yeah.
Bruce, I don't know if you have any suggestions on how that can be done in a way that is effective, but not, you know, a million dollars, um, or, or something that the building department would like to see, if it would like to see anything specifically?
Can I just...
Sure.
Right now, it's so overgrown that most people don't realize that it's a driveway, people park in front of it all the time, like, I, I don't really see that being a problem because it's already kind of at the point where it does not look like a parking spot. Yeah, you see it.
Yeah, actually, I mean, it actually looks like it.
Yeah. It's, that, that's kind of already taken care of itself.
Okay.
Because, you know, nature.
So i, if and when you put gravel down on the circular or asphalt, if you could just do something there, I think you said that was your intention earlier, right? To sort of match it, so, with keeping that in mind for the, the two spots.
Understood.
All right, uh, so can I have a motion, uh, motion, uh, to approve the variance with the condition stated for agenda item number one?
So moved.
A motion by Stowe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judy, uh, and then I'll, I'll take the roll, uh, Stowe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Elaine? Yes, for me. May, you may go enjoy dinner with your family.
Oh, they're already there. Thank you all very much, and, and thank you guys for serving on this board, I know it's obnoxious and thankless and I really do appreciate it, thank you, have a good night.
Good luck. Uh, and then...
Yeah, just make a motion, just for formality's sake.
Yeah, so, uh, I'd like to make that motion, um, that I mentioned before, about sending a letter, uh, from our board, uh, to the tra, to the Traffic and Safety Committee, if I'm saying that correctly, is their official term, uh, to just advise them that an application on this street came in front of us, uh, and it is our, uh, opinion, um, that parking on one side of the street, uh, would be, one side of the street parking, passing a one side of the street parking restriction, uh, would be, uh, in the best interest of...
And, and in particular, where the parking would be on the side of the four-plex that we have back there, which shares a common driveway, so that people could drive through and make the turn into that driveway and so on.
So the parking should be on the same side of the street as Ms. McCready's house?
No, no, the opposite, the opposite side. It'll be on the side with the other driveway.
Yeah, and with the, with the least trap, yeah, with the le, with the least cuts, right?
Yeah. So that the trucks going into that four-plex would be able to make the corner.
Yeah, I mean, if you feel like giving a recommendation to the Traffic and Safety, great, you could also say an application came in front of us and we have a concern and we would like you to look further into this and leave it up to them to sort of decide.
Sure.
If they decide to do something, obviously, uh, the ZBA's hands are tied.
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't say anything about which side of the street.
You could, you could do whatever you want.
Yeah, but then if it's wrong.
Well, maybe, maybe the Traffic and Safety Board isn't intimately acquainted with the car accidents that are happening in there.
Sure, sure, now we are intimately acquainted.
Now.
Yes.
So you're gonna write that letter, Jordan?
I don't know, I don't know if I am gonna write it or like, direct my attorney to write it.
Oh.
We'll, we'll figure something out.
Can I, can I have a motion, please?
So moved to write that letter.
Yeah, can I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, all right. Uh, Judy, sorry, uh, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number two?
So moved.
Judy, can I have a second?
Seconds.
Second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number two, 907 Walcott, please.
Did you read that letter?
No, which one did I read?
The one from the neighbors. It was an email to me.
Do you have it up?
Good evening, board, good evening, neighbors, um, my name is Robert Martin, been, uh, living here in Beacon for almost 18 years now, and, um, looking to, um, as you see from the pictures and submitted plans, we're, we're just looking to put a second story on with two dormers in the front and, uh, and one dormer in the rear, um, so in order to, to do that, I've applied for, uh, for the variance, um, just, just so you have some historical perspective, the, so adjacent to property on one side is the Sergeant School driveway, um, so pretty much no views or, or separation will be compromised, um, and really, the, it's only one neighbor on the left side, which is Carol, her family's house there. Uh, the addition isn't substantial, the peak of the roof would increase by nine feet, uh, with the base staying the same height, um, the area additional non-conformity is 139 square feet, so you can see it's not very much in the perspect, in the projected area, and the proposed 21-foot height of the ridge is well within the heights of all adjacent properties, so it, it's lower pretty much all the houses in the neighborhood, um, except for one. So I'm here, um, because we were asking for, I guess the, um, uh, zoning requires a, um, at least 15-foot on the side for, for, to put addition on the house, uh, so we're, we're seeking to allow for a five-foot, uh, side yard setback instead. I spoke to some of the neighbors who, um, didn't see a problem with it, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to speak directly with Carol.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, sure, can you hear me now? Yeah. Okay, so I spoke to most of the neighbors in the, in the area as well, um, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to, to speak with Carol directly, again, she's a next-door neighbor there, but, um, you can see from the pictures there, it's gonna make the house, uh, look a lot nicer, it'll increase the value of the house, which would also increase the value of neighbor's house as well as the neighborhood, so, um, that was my proposal for, uh, requesting the granting of the, um, of the, uh, section 223-17D to allowing the, um, five-foot sard,
Could you describe the use of the other buildings on this property?
Um, so...
I'm, I'm looking at the, yeah, the plot plan, I'm looking at the plot plan and I'm trying to understand which, which of these buildings is the one, that is the one that's gonna be...
Yeah.
Okay, yes, gotcha.
Built on.
Correct, so that'd be the, the, the structure in the middle, so the one on the front closest to, uh, Walcott Avenue, uh, that's a, a separate structure with, with two one-bedroom apartments, the middle house here is just the cottage, which is what the picture you saw there, it's just the, the single-story, uh, one family in the middle, and then in the rear is a, is a garage at the end of the...
It says new four-car garage, is that gonna be built or is that...
No, so that was, this was, this plan was, was taken from when I originally asked for garage to be built.
I see.
So, that's where the garage is now.
So there is another house on the property that has two apartments in it?
Correct, single-story, two apartments side by side.
Is that, Bruce, is that legal?
It's a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
Two families in the front, the front building, a single family in the middle and a garage in the back.
Correct, yes.
And when you put the second floor on this house, is it... When you put the second floor on this house, is it, is this, well, I'm looking at it head-on like this.
Mm-hmm.
Is this already five feet? Is this already, so that it's existing that it's...
Yes, it's existing.
This side yard five, five-foot thing?
Correct, correct, yes, I believe.
Yes.
It's the same footprint.
So, you're not going to...
Oh, yes, yes, same footprint.
You're not gonna make it any...
No, not any wider.
Smaller.
It's going to...
It's just gonna go up?
Correct.
On top of the existing footprint?
Correct.
Where are those pictures of it?
If you look on the second, the last page of the plan, the visual plan, that indicates the size of the floor, the setback for the floor, and the setback is not...
So, when you look down the driveway, what looks like new construction all the way in the back, or currently being constructed, is the garage?
No, it's, everything is finished.
Oh, okay, 'cause it looks like plywood from the street, driving by when you look all the way down the driveway.
Driving, no, the garage is complete, has its same white vinyl siding as the garage, as the house, as both houses.
So, where it says new car garage, that's built?
Correct.
Did you extend the driveway to go to it?
It is, the existing driveway was there most of the way, and just some gravel was added at the end.
Okay.
In front of the garage.
So, what's on the other side, you know, above the garage, what's, what's the property on the next...
Behind it.
Oh, behind it?
Yeah.
That's a school property.
That's, that's sergeant's school?
Yeah, it's woods, but it's part of the...
It goes up.
Yeah.
It's part of sergeant's school.
It was very, I tried to look on Google Maps, you know, from above, all the trees, you can't see anything.
Yes.
So...
Okay.
So, I'm jumping ahead and away to the, one of the letters we got from your neighbors sent to us.
Okay.
And they pointed out something I had never heard of, a 25% rule for existing buildings on a single lot.
It's a building coverage standard, standard figure. It may be the case that it's over 25, but I assume it's pre-existing non-conforming. If it is over 25, Bruce? Yeah, it is. Yeah. And then, something to note is if you build a second floor building up, building coverage is increased.
Right.
Does it increase?
You're still in the footprint.
You're still in the footprint.
Correct, that's why...
To build an addition on the back of the house, and a variance would be needed for the increase in the building coverage, but...
Right, or if they extended the roof dramatically in some way, that also counts as...
As long as it's part of the building, yeah, but this is, given that it's the same footprint going straight up, the building coverage is not increased.
Wild.
Yes, that's why we had the architect draw it that way for the proposal, so it's just going straight up and no increase to the area, right, building area.
All right. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this application, and if so, could you please do so? Now, you can just state your name for the record and speak into the microphone, that would be appreciated.
My name is Jack Mendelson, I'm here with my wife Carol. I think, earlier this morning, I submitted a letter and three photographs, and it sounds like you received those items.
We did receive your letter, email, and normally, if you weren't here, I'd read it into the record, I'll just acknowledge, we have received it, we've all read it, and it is in the record.
Okay. So, what I'm gonna say, and I'll try to keep it brief, is pretty much reiterating what's in the, what's in my letter, okay? We, you know, my wife and I, we own the adjacent property at 911 Walcott Avenue. This has been, and we have a house there, this is a property that's been in my wife's family for literally 100 years, the Maranachos, and she was born there and grew up there, went to school there. And, so we are, we are opposed to the granting of the variance, and I tried to spell out the reasons for that in my letter, so let me just go through those. And I, and obviously, you know, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know the regulations, and, and so, I'm mostly reacting just from a practical perspective. First of all, I think one key point is that this is a small lot, about a third of an acre, that's incredibly crowded already. There are three edifices on this little one-third lot acre, a two-unit apartment in the front, the house in the middle, a four-car garage in the back, plus 10-plus cars in front of the garage and in the garage. So, the whole space is filled with either, virtually, it's almost entirely filled with either buildings or cars. And I, I would have thought that that in itself was out of compliance with regulations, that a little lot like that could be just covered with structures, but in any case, the practical issue from my perspective is that expanding property in a space that's already tremendously cluttered and overcrowded doesn't make any sense from my perspective. The second point I want to make, and again, I'm repeating what's in the letter, is that Carol and I feel that we would be harmed, our interests would be harmed by this project in a few ways. Number one, we would have a loss of privacy in our backyard, because now, from this higher floor, this new higher floor at 907, you could look into our backyard in a way that you can't now. We would lose some privacy. Also, the view from our house in that direction would be now impeded by this higher floor. And the overall effect of those things would be to lower the value of our property. So, you know, that's our, that's our basic concern, that's why we're opposed to the request. I said in the, in my letter, and I, you know, I, obviously, I don't know all the considerations that our neighbors have in thinking about this, but there is that two-family unit in the front, if they wanted to move there to get more space, and move the tenants to current space, they would not have to expand their, their, the edifices on the property. And our interests would not be impacted through us, through an approach like that. So, that's basically our, our feeling, and I provided those color photographs to try to bring across how, from our point of view, how crowded the space is, and, and I hope that it gives you a feel for, for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this application from the public?
I just want to say...
If you could just, yeah, just on the record, thank you.
I can understand where they would like to have a larger place to live, that's understandable. The house in the front, which is a rant, was basically originally a ranch-style one-family house, that could be restored back to a one-family house, and it would be a lovely house to live in. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the application?
I'm going.
Yeah, all right. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number two?
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Stowe, second by Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so, let us, well... Better to engage in discussion now, or ask the applicant if they want us to proceed?
I'd ask the applicant if they want to proceed.
So, Mr. Martin, we have, as I mentioned at the, at the head of the meeting, we have four members present today. We can proceed with our discussion on the factors that we have to legally consider and render a decision. You'll need three of four. If you would like, we could also, you could also request an adjournment to August's meeting, presumably, or, I'm sorry, July's meeting, presumably, we might have five members at that point, in which case, you would need three of five. We don't tip our hand on how we're going to discuss, of course, so, yeah.
And, and, sorry, George, to be clear, as I say with every application, when this opportunity is provided to you, has no indication of how the vote is going to go. It is a standard procedure. In fact, as Jordan mentioned earlier, the previous applicant, Ms. McCreadyo, had the same option in April, and took that option, adjourned in May, and that's why she was back. So, for the record, there's no indication of how the vote's gonna go, it's just because there are four members here out of five today, you have the option. And if you were to choose to do that, you can always come back next month with, if you have any revisions, you could prevent those, if you have any additional materials, you could present those. If you want to take time to speak to neighbors, you could do that, you have anything you want to do in that month, you would just have to comply with the submission deadline, if you were to take it. Again, there's no indication by having that option that you're going either which way.
And then, just, just for, to be clear, if it, if he did not receive three yes votes tonight, then he would need a unanimous board to rehear?
Yeah, and there would have to be a substantive change to the project, so, as with every application, again, not yours specifically, if you are denied, if the variance is denied, you, you can appeal it, or the only way to come back is you have to have a substantive change to the project, and then the board would have to unanimously agree to rehear it, basically saying, this is now a different project, let's vote on this again.
So, just wanted to outline your options.
Thank you.
The, the other thing that I hope you, you caught from George is that, you know, maybe you can speak with your neighbors, and maybe there's some agreement you can come to, that you can modify what you're doing, or what's on the property, or whatever, and that might make them more comfortable, so you could do that, too.
Right. One more question I would have then for Bruce. If the project was scaled back a little bit, and it had 15 feet between the addition and the property line, would that satisfy anything, or no?
If you were to step it back?
Correct.
If you were to step it back?
In other words, don't build as far to the, yeah.
So, that means you would need a variance, but...
Do or do not?
Do or not.
What's that?
If, if the second floor was narrowed, inasmuch as it's now no longer five feet from the property line, it's 15 feet on the second floor, Bruce, you're saying there would be no variance necessary because the addition is compliant?
If you pull that back, it could...
Yeah.
How would you do that?
You...
How?
It would just be shorter on one side, correct?
Yeah, it would be shorter on one side, yeah, it's up to you, it's your choice.
Because it's...
Aesthetically, it's not gonna, you know, it's, it's not gonna be symmetrical, but that, that's your, what your choice is.
Right.
And you could always discuss that with your, if you were to choose to do that...
You would have to do that.
You would discuss it with your architect.
Correct.
And then, if that change, or any change were to happen, you submit that, and then you come back next month, and it's basically an analysis on that.
Right.
Can we just say, if we live in a...
If please, you have to get in the microphone.
Hi, I'm his wife, I'm Lisa Martin. The neighbors that live next door to us that are present this evening have a two-story house, they're, one of their two concerns was that we could see into their backyard if we put this addition on our home. They have a two-story house, they can see into our backyard at all times, so I'm not sure where the give and take is there, ma'am. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
So, I think, yes, prior to, consult, we'll consult with, with Carol and her husband, and then we'll consult with the architect and see, like I said, maybe we can come to some kind of different agreement to make it easier, and then we can adjourn till the August meeting. So, I guess my question is...
It's July, next day is Ju...
I mean, July meeting.
Mercedes is July, sorry.
I'll give it to you.
Just wanted to get the official date for you.
25th, oh, no.
Yeah, I think we, right, right.
July 16th.
Okay.
July 16th.
And you would have to comply with the submission deadline.
The last...
So, right, so just, so just so you're aware of the deadlines, right, you basically have a week to submit a change, which the understanding is, that would be aggressive, so, he could, in theory, adjourn for more, right, you could, you could, you could adjourn to August as well, but, you know, what, if you ask for an adjournment, we would grant an adjournment, and then, when you wanted to get back on the calendar, you communicate with Mercedes and ask to be put back on.
I would think I'm gonna be...
Well...
I think I'm gonna be in Portugal.
Well, if it doesn't have a variance problem, then...
All right, just for clarification, so I want to get on to the July meeting, I have to submit a change or something, proposal?
It was by the la...
Within the next 10 days, is that what you said?
The last, what?
A week from today is...
It's the last Tuesday of the month, there's a submission deadline for any, any next month.
Gotcha.
And that's if there are changes. If there are no changes whatsoever, you don't have to worry about submitting anything, just let Mercedes know that you'll be appearing at the next, we're gonna assume you're appearing, you confirm you're gonna appear?
Right.
And that's it.
Right, so if you, if you, you know, if you have a discussion, and you don't get anywhere, and you say, you know, I want to roll with what I have submitted already, you can...
Then, right.
Correct.
Depending on who's, right, who the board is here that night, could be all five of you, only four of you.
And the flip side is if you're having discussions with your neighbors, and you're saying, you know what, I want to take another month to do this, you just let the, the city know, July, can we adjourn to August? I want to take, you know, four or five weeks to figure this out, speak to my architect, do whatever you want.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think...
That's if you choose to do that.
Right, 'cause I don't think that can all be done in...
A week, yeah.
A week, so, so I just have to let Mercedes know if we want to go to the August, we can go right to August, we don't have, we can skip July, is that how it works? Or do I have to let you...
Yeah, you don't have to appear in July, you could always, the assumption will be, if you're adjourning to July, that we're gonna hear you in July. If you have nothing to submit, you don't worry about it, and then, you just have to let Mercedes know that we're gonna adjourn from July, or we're going to assume you're gonna be here.
Is there a deadline for adjournments that you hold, or no?
So, just let her, you would have to let her know at a reasonable time before the next meeting, not five minutes before?
Right.
But if you know two weeks before that you want to adjourn, you let the city know, and that's all, that's all it would be.
So, two weeks prior to the 16th of July meeting would be the July 2nd?
The next meeting would be...
Right, so I would have to let you know...
We got July 16th.
No, you could, you could let us know inside of that, inside of that timeline. So, I, so I would say, you know, we're gonna know, right, so like, if you're having discussions, and they're going nowhere, or you're not changing, it's likely you're gonna be on for, I guess, unless you're having ongoing discussions, then you decide that you, you want to make a change after the deadline for July, so you're gonna be making changes for August.
Then you're gonna go into August.
Right.
So, I'm only gonna let you know either way.
Correct. The only decision we have to make tonight is whether you're adjourning tonight.
Okay, yeah, it might as well make sense, so we can talk, and I can talk to the architect, so, yeah, so I'm requesting an adjournment.
Okay.
Sure, all right, so...
Just make a motion to reopen and get rid of the previous one.
Right, so I'm just gonna make a motion to undo my previous motion that was approved of adjourning the public hearing, and continuing the public hearing until the July meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Can I have a motion to adjourn the June meeting of the zoning board of appeals?
So moved.
Motion by Judy.
Second.
Second by Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.